I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recognize we have a forum here today. Any emergency additions to the agenda? Not today, is there?
No, you have the ladies.
Approval for the agenda? If I can have somebody make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, same side. We don't have anyone here to talk on the agenda items. All non-agenda items will be addressed at the end of the meeting. Let's see, we will move on to meeting minutes of the regular meeting for July 21st, 2025. If I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of July 21st, 2025.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion passes. We'll go next here to routine matters, the two vouchers and financial reports. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve vouchers and financial reports.
I'll second.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Is there anything to discuss with anything on that?
If you do, Tracy is joining us, she has COVID, so she didn't want to. So I do know that there were several questions over the last few days. So if you have more, I think she's here to answer. If not, we can.
I don't have any more after she answered the ones you did. Okay, we'll move on to communications. See one donations, is we'd like to add anything?
Yes, we, we're at the beginning of the school year, so we do have a few and we are appreciative of. We have some for the volleyball team, for CAP, and then for FFA. So as we do each month, we just need your formal approval and they just need to be received in correctly.
And then we move on to any updates on fundraisers?
We do need just to formally approve those donations, to accept those.
Okay.
And I do want to make note that Chris is the vice president.
Yeah.
Our president is absent tonight.
I'll make a motion to approve his donations.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same side. And then we'll move on to the fundraiser update.
We just like to talk about the current fundraisers that are occurring throughout the month. And so you see there's an FFA blueberry sale, we have Otterbin Elementary Student Activities Candy Sale, Choir Drama has a mattress fundraiser, and our choir has a pumpkin bash. So those are going on during the month of August. Just wanted to bring that to your attention. No, no action on that.
Okay. And then now we move on to the principal update. Who would like to start?
I'm first on the agenda, so.
Okay.
There you go.
It's like it's you.
All right, at Benton Central, as you guys all know, we are experiencing a lot of different changes. Our buses are coming to us first. We're still all working out the kinks of that, but it's getting better every single day, so. For us, that means a new schedule, so you can't rely, you know, nine thirteen. We don't go to the second hour anymore. I honestly have forgotten what the time was now, but now we go at nine oh. We started at eighteen and giving our fifteen minutes for breakfast that we kind of desperately needed last year. And we've also gained what we're calling SRT time, Student Resource Time. Think of it, you've probably heard about advisory programs, things like that. The kids are in an SRT. We have promoted it the heck out of it to them about it's, it's their time. It's what, what do they need to get done? We have a couple of days a week are Wednesday, we're going to do a couple of days of clubs. Clubs are going to start tomorrow, that's going to be a work in progress. Just we're trying to get more clubs, more things out there for kids to, to do on club day. But if they need a, if it's a what I need day, it's check your email. Trying to get them to be digital citizens, checking their email, checking their email, checking their email. Many of the kids do not do that. They can work on Alex for math, they can work on Membeam for, for English. They can read, they can do their homework. If they have a teacher who shares the same SRT, they can go seek that teacher out, ask questions. It's really that time, as we've told them, is for them to use. So we're hoping for great things there. And on Wednesdays, we're going to do kind of a brain training activity. We're working on those as we go through our conscious discipline training. And then, as I said, Thursday will be clubs and then Friday and then another Wednesday. Back to lockers. It's been pretty smooth. A lot of, a lot of anxiety to start the year and, you know, really, although we've had kids have the ability to have the lockers with the backpacks, most of them chose not to. And so they, after a lot of phone calls, we've sent out a lot of directions, videos, et cetera. They've done really, really well with it. So they've done excellent with it and it's gone a lot smoothing, I thought it might, the way it started, so. And then all the sports kind of started up over the weekend and here we go. So we're the full, full regalia there.
Prairie Crossing, we've started off with a great year. We have had a couple of changes with Mrs. Barr taking over with special ed and special programs. And then with Amanda Whaley taking over as dean of students. Both of them are in their element. They're, they're, they love doing what they're doing and they're doing, both doing an excellent job. And so I appreciate their help and, and what they're doing. I had to laugh today because I had to remove a small snake from one of our bathrooms. And Amanda Whaley said, let me guess, there's not a manual for that, is there? I said, no, not a manual, so. But again, both of them are doing very well. We're off to a good start this year, so.
All right, so Otterbin, we welcomed a few new students from Prairie Crossing. That transition has gone really well. Getting those families in, I think last May really helped the students, the tour of the school and getting the families in for back to school night. So that transition has gone very well and I think the students are very happy. And then of course, just like every year, we did gain some students that have moved into our corporation. So we are excited to have some new families and new faces at Otterbin. The new start time, I've had a lot of great feedback from our staff at the elementary level. Letting them have a couple of minutes, especially with this new curriculum, collaborating with their grade level peers or their special education teachers. That's been a very good thing. I know that wasn't an easy process that we went through, so I just wanted to relay their appreciation to you guys for the hard work on that. With going along with that is transportation. That was not an easy decision, I know. Jen Wright's not here, but she's gotten, you know, she hears the ball, she hears the good, bad, and the ugly. And just appreciate her help and allowing all of that and a lot of, a lot of late hours, I know. So we, we appreciate everything she has done for that. And then just going through, we're really focusing this year at Otterbin on our curriculum, what we've adopted. And so here recently, we went through a purge of old curriculum. Because if we're not using it, there's no reason to have it, because if we have a storage room, they're going to use it. So it's kind of a little shell shock for some, but just giving them that support. We have the resources and materials we need and getting them to utilize with fidelity what we have. So overall, it's gone very well. Very excited. I know we're going to be getting some construction going, so we're anxious to see that.
Thank you.
Key?
Okay.
Thank you.
If you want to take one and pass those around. Just a quick curriculum update. I would say the access to materials and getting everything opened up and up and running is going well for everyone for the most part. The reading program, the lessons kicked off this week. And this has been such a successful rollout of curriculum because of the PD days we had in the spring, the summer days we had, the actual training that we had as part of what we adopted. And as you can see from the calendar, with our PD days, this is just first semester. But with our PD days coming up, our October full e-learning day, we'll have another CKLA coach coming. And that will be a time when our teachers can talk with them about pacing, get some feedback on how the reading program and the use of it's going for them for K through five. Remember that, we talked about this before, that our focus this year is really being intentional and considering instruction, which is thinking about those best strategies, looking at the data that we're collecting and using it to make decisions. And then coming back to our curriculum mapping and our, the other part of our focus beyond instruction are relationships. And so that's why our professional development calendar is broken into our BC collaboration days. We'll be focusing on instruction, our curriculum and growth in those areas. And then we also have through the behavior grant, conscious discipline coaching setup. These will be either a morning or an afternoon session. And if teachers attend, they will receive classroom tools as an incentive. And so they just have to jump on a Zoom before school or after school and spend time with Katie Ahern, who is our certified conscious discipline coach. And if you want to know more about it, I can share more about conscious discipline. Basically, we are really taking a look as educators ourselves about the way that we handle and react in situations. And we're learning lots of strategies and then passing those strategies on to students so that we do have improvement in behavior and an understanding of ourselves and the way we react and building up that ability to come back to calm, so you're ready to learn and the resilience that goes along with that. So we will have Katie with us. You can see in November, the grants paying for full days of coaching. So she will be in the building at Otterbin on the eighteenth, in the building at BC on the nineteenth, and in the building at Prairie Crossing on the twentieth. And what that might look like, she has a coaching menu. And so teachers could sign up, they could have her come into their room and actually get a lesson started while the teacher watches the way that she does that. Or they can also schedule a one-on-one chat with her. Now you might think, what will teachers be talking to this coach about on a Zoom? But it's, it's tough situations. It's, this is happening in my class, how should I handle this? Or I'm really having problems motivating this student, what would you recommend? And conscious discipline is research-based and it's, they have a great history and work with lots and lots and lots of districts to help move the mark with behaviors so that kids are ready to learn. Okay, so that's professional development. And then on the back, we'll talk just a minute about compliance. You can see that the IDOE puts together windows for us. And then this is our own BCSE assessment calendar. So through the year, we're getting ready. Our, our earliest learners, kindergarten's ESGI and our early readers are taking those DIBL assessments. And then everyone will gear up three through eight and take the NWEA. Later on, we'll have some iLearn checkpoints. You can see the SAT, we take the PSAT and there's a fall SAT kids can sign up for. All of our juniors will take the SAT in March. So this is just for your reference. But right now, what's happening is we have to send out a security and integrity form for teachers to sign. And also if you are a test administrator, you have to take, you have to do a training. So teachers are right now so excited about their classes and their students and their new lessons, but we also have to do the compliance part of it and we're taking care of that. Let me know if you have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And I do know that our principals and leaders, you may have other obligations and this is the time we always let you sneak out and no judgment for that if you need to take off. Thank you.
And now we are, we're on to the NEOL policy, special ed date, first reading.
Yes, this is a first reading, so you have had access to this for a few weeks and you can continue to look at that. Basically, it is to make sure that we are in compliance with the new laws and statutes and specifically some language and some grammatical and technical terms. So just to highlight those regarding recording regarding these student assessments, basically the terminology with that. Supplemental pay, what, what the state will allow us for, to pay supplemental pay for our educators. The enrollment of students without legal settlement, the student transfers for athletic reasons, that is allowed now. That's a whole new policy that we would need to put in. And the attendance, it does clarify the definitions of absences. And it also prohibits schools from suspending or expelling based solely on absences. So those are the highlights, but your entire draft has all of the policies with the recommended changes from NEOL. So we will vote on that next month. Just wanted you to be aware of those highlights.
We have no hold business, so we will move on to the new business. So you want here, consider staff report and other personal items. May consider normal staff report items. I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Consider approval of the updated classified employee handbook. You get somebody to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to consider the approval of the updated classified employee handbook.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion passes. Consider approval of the updated implement weather policy for classified staff.
I can try to explain that. So it's, it's a, it's a newer policy and so I, we just wanted to bring attention to that. It, you have just approved it within the handbook. But just to be clear, when we have e-learning days, we needed to spell that out in more detail. So it just clarifies things and just wanted you to be aware of that. So you basically have approved it in the handbook, but for all practical purposes, let's just approve that section as well. From here on out, it will be part of the handbook annually, yes.
I'll make a motion to consider the approval of the updated implement weather policy for classified staff.
I'll second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I did, yes. All opposed, same side. Motion passes. Now we move on to E four. Consider approval of disposition of the following obsolete equipment, land-up automatic hot tank and pressure washer, a Robinar machine, a ProLift two post lift, a laser for alignment tool, an Allen computer test center, and a Sebring hot pressure washer.
From the automotive class, right.
That's all my own stuff we're giving. What the hell?
It all worked for you, didn't it?
You probably take it off their hand, right?
If I can get a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to. I said approval of disposition of the following equipment that Chris previously listed.
I'll second, yeah.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion passes.
And again, we'll put that on the public's surplus site.
Okay.
So Scott, you're welcome to go out there and buy it.
Yeah, I can buy it back, that's right.
Yeah, at least we get something back for it, not to do that. And we're switching E five and E six. So E five now is going to be considered approval of a confidentiality and non-disclosure agreement between Benton County Community School Corporations and the Franciscan Alliance.
So I'll, I'll try to explain this. So we have a new contract with Franciscan Health for athletic trainer. So we have to have, and all of this took place in July. And so we need a non-disclosure for the old contract and then we need to sign the new one. And so it seems to me we should do things chronologically. And so that's why I asked Chris to do E six first.
If I can get a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to consider the approval of the confidentiality and non-disclosure agreement between Benton Community School Corporation and Franciscan Alliance.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion passes. Now we'll jump up to consider approval of the updated athletic training services agreement between Benton Central High School Athletic Department and Franciscan Health, effective September seventh nineteen, or twenty twenty-five. I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
So did you say this is something that everybody's running into?
Yes, so this is a new contract that we've had here for a few weeks. However, our current athletic trainer has just resigned to take another position. And so Franciscan is the one who we contract with, so they are, so they are required to do the search for that. And that's on them to do. However, they're having shortages with trainers. And so it, it could be a while before we find someone. But by signing this contract, number one, if we don't have a trainer, then we don't pay for it. But signing the contract means they have the obligation to do the search. So my recommendation is, is to sign a contract so that they will do the search and hopefully we'll get a new, new trainership.
Will they be able to provide somebody in the interim while we don't have anybody to sign that contract?
There are all sorts of options. Now, at my previous school, this happened with Northwest Health. And then I'm here, regionally, it, it is happening. So sometimes you can, they can send somebody on gay nights. Sometimes they can borrow from another school for a week. So you can, you can piece it together. It's not our, our best scenario, but there are ways to, to work through this. And that is what Mr. Paul is doing right now with Franciscan. I don't have a, a good answer right now. But if we do not sign the contract, then we are on our own in looking for these trainers. And we, we don't have the pool to do that or the knowledge at this point.
And the reason for the cost difference is because the, the shortage of people available?
The shortage and the competitiveness, yeah, they just can't make it work anymore.
Yeah.
And I'm sure that part of the formula, the, the salary formula is with referrals. And I'm sure they're doing the numbers and they're probably not getting the number of referrals to meet their needs. It's Collin and Franciscan, IU, Northwest, like I said, I, I have colleagues who experience the same thing now.
Yeah.
So typically what happens if you don't have a provided person at an event?
So I, I can just, on my experience, because I spoke to my former athletic director, and so this is three years ago, four years ago, they are still without a trainer. So their coaches do the taping after, you know, after school. And they always call the opponents to see if they have one that will come or if we are visiting, being aware that they are there. So you, you try to be proactive and will we have somebody at these events? So it's a lot of calling and piecing things together, week to week, month to month. But I, this is my third year here. It was a year before I left there and so they, they don't have anybody. I do know South Newton has a teacher on staff that has a training license. And so that person dual responsibilities and gets paid for his teaching and then on top of that gets paid for training.
Does Jared still carry his license or?
He does, he will have to renew it. Right, so there are some things we need to, to look at. And this resignation just came, uh-oh, Mr..
Just canceling that?
Cancel, cancel.
So this is all new, the resignation just came, I believe, on Friday. And this was up for agreement, so I did talk to Jared and said, should we sign it? And he said, yes, absolutely, because they are at obligation to do the search.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
So potentially this could look way different in three or four years.
Oh, yes. It could be an employee of Benton Community School Corporation solely, without any contract with the hospital. I don't see this improving with the hospitals, because like I said, Northwest Health and IU, they, they've had these issues. And now it's Franciscan, so it must be a pattern.
All right, if I could get a motion in favor? Or I mean, sorry, in favor of both, yeah.
All those in favor?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those same side. Motion passes. Okay, E seven, consider approval of Project Lead the Way curriculum and expenses.
So what this is, is you, Project Lead the Way curriculum over at the junior senior high school. And this is really a tech, an adoption of materials. And we normally see this in our math curriculum and our reading materials. This is a unique content area and they don't have a cycle. They don't have partners or other grade levels to, to do. But they do need some curriculum materials. It will enhance the human biology and anatomy physiology. Those are CTE courses and Indiana College course, so this will enhance their lab work. Potentially, this will lead to another pathway. So I think we need to approve this recommendation for the materials. It helps our kids in, in the future with the pathway, so. And it's run just like other materials.
Do you have any idea how many people are in the course roughly?
No, and, and I don't, you don't want to guess then in case I get it wrong. But those are two classes, the human anatomy and, and human biology and then the anatomy physiology. Those are your higher level courses, so.
They're probably going to be small.
Fifteen to thirty, yeah, yeah.
And do you know how many hours a day she does that?
I do not.
I was curious. I'll make a motion to consider the approval of Project Lead the Way BLTW curriculum and expenses.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side. Motion passes. And E eight, consider approval of permission to advertise the 2026 budget.
So it's, it's just advertising and budget season and so you just need to start the process, yeah.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Motion passes. And now we move to public comments. And we have first up here, Stacy Drake.
Let me, do I sit up there or do I sit here?
Whatever your comfortable, we can hear you, yeah.
I was not going to turn down city in one of these stairs. Okay, thank you for that. So my name is Stacy Drake. I've got two kids at the high school, junior high school, and two at elementary at Prairie Crossing. So I wrote down a little bit of a speech and I'm hoping, this is my first time at a school board meeting, so I don't know how long these discussions last or how to get on the agenda. I would like that to be an item that's discussed. So I'll get started. Thank you for your time, your efforts and your energy put into creating such a robust and expansive program here in Benton County. As someone in public health and in higher ed, these opportunities are going to have impacts beyond what you or I will probably ever see. The children's lives that are being served. I felt the effort, the communication from newsletters, the fun alerts, Dr. Zupin, thank you for those, and parent square. These are amazing items that will keep Benton County thriving and our population longevity. But what happens when there's a barrier created by a policy that creates undue hardship for equitable access? But what happens when there's a barrier created by a policy that creates undue hardship for equitable access? I am an advocate. I have connections to Dr. Nicole Adams, who helped write the grant for teen mental health first aid. I would like to help bridge connections to future to Purdue, like I did at Purdue Extension. I'm a community builder. This is my home, and so that means the other families are as well. The one-stop bus policy is what I would like to open up for discussion, add as an agenda item, to talk about, there's no option right now. It's, this is our policy, and there are no exceptions. What happens when there's split custody between two households? What happens to that? So, for example, at my household, and I know there's at least six or seven others, we have one child who resides there, who is in my custody hundred percent of the time. The bus stops there, he gets on, he goes. The other three children alternate four to five days at one house, four to five days at another house. So, when this bus comes up, they will pick up one child and leave the other three. Does that make sense? And coming from a family where two people are working, we probably will be able to find a way to get them to school. But what about the families that are facing economic hardships here? They're not going to have that type of access. I don't understand how, how that is something that's equitable and something that's not even open for discussion. And I think that's what really kind of brought out the advocate in me, is not only for my own household, because I don't want to have to miss work to have to take children to school. And I just read the attendance policy. And so, in my mind, I'm thinking, today, they just sent out this policy that we're open to communication. We want to help advocate for attendance, but yet this policy exists without any open discussion. So, what I would like to do is to have some recommendations. And I have four here. Again, I don't know how school boards work. I would like it to be an agenda item. I would request that Benton County School Corporation establish an alternating address accommodation process for split custody or licensed daycare. For those households where it's a case-by-case scenario, give the families who absolutely need it an opportunity to have those children have the same access to education as the other children. Because when a person has to miss work, that's less sick time. I don't know if everyone here understands what it's like to be in poverty. It is the biggest barrier, and I would hate to see a child missed out on school because they can't ride a bus, especially for split custody households. It makes no sense to me. Also, I would like to request that anytime there is a transportation busing policy drawn up, that the social economic realities of the community, of the entire population that's being served, be taken into account. Open it up for public discussion. And maybe that's something that already happened. I was not aware that it was. So, for our family, it's, we have to figure out how to get kids to school, sometimes four to five days in a row. What are we going to do? Luckily, we have more than one vehicle. What about those families that don't? That's what I have.
We typically listen and don't make a lot of response, but I am going to tell you that the perspectives that you spoke about, sometimes we miss those perspectives. And I am going to say that I will reach out to you to talk about this. The one-stop policy is kind of a universal one-stop. So, if I talk to other school corporations, we all know what we're talking about, because we all have the same issues with safety. You know, dropping off a kid at a place where they shouldn't have gone that night because, you know, it was three other places earlier in the month, you know? So, it is a real danger. However, there are perspectives like that. So, when we adopted this policy, it's a policy that other schools have, so we feel confident in that. But you bring up some things that we don't always think about. And alternate policies, I think there's room for that. You need to be careful with who really has those issues and who doesn't. It's a documentation.
Yes, communication. There's no process in place for those who need it. That's my biggest issue.
Who truly need it, yes.
We truly need it, and I know there's other families that do as well. So, I'm not advertising, we're getting rid of this policy.
Exactly.
But case by case, don't let it be an economic hardship for families here in Benton County.
And I would just say, case by case with those parameters. If it's going to be yes to your case, then what did we look at?
Correct.
So, I would say no promises, but I will say it's worth a listen. And as far as I'm concerned, I think the people that you need to speak with is probably myself and the transportation director first. And let's see if we can't get.
I have done that, and I was turned down. Explained the whole situation and was turned down, which brought me here.
Okay, and I will say this, this week, the number.
It's been insane. I bet, I bet.
We need to change it, and a lot of these things are for the good.
Yes.
So, I would say then, if we can have a conversation with the transportation department.
Absolutely.
And the board knows that there was a discussion, I would bring them up to speed. If it is something that we're going to amend, then it will come in front of them.
Okay.
And if it is something that you feel like you weren't heard, then you have gone through the proper channels, and then you could let them know. I do want to point out again that, you know, we had a good reason for it, and we still believe in that reason.
I understand, I understand that part. When I spoke with Jennifer, she said, you know, if there's an accident or a wreck, we need to know who was supposed to be on that bus. But the flip side is, how do you know that kid got on the bus? So, if there was a different tracking system, like a chip or some sort of card that was given, which I know that's funding, that's funding related. But even then, there's still a safety risk, because you're not live tracking who's getting on the bus, who's getting off the bus. So, it's kind of, if that's not already happening, is it truly a safety issue for these situations?
For those, I see what you're saying.
You see what I'm saying?
Yes. And I am, will say again, in my world is the schools. So, I have been in the office an hour or two before, and the number of calls, we need to change here, and it is chaotic.
Yeah, and that's definitely, yes.
So, if we could arrange a meeting and explore this.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, that's it.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming, thank you.
How was Jared?
It was very nice.
And then we've got Jake Muller.
Yeah, is it okay if I stand up?
Absolutely.
Whatever you're comfortable with.
I'm Jake Olermiller, I'm here with my kids, Amos, who's six, a first grader, second day of, or second week of first grade at Audubon. We've got her to the year, pre-k before she comes to school, also at Audubon. We moved to Audubon in twenty twenty-three for a number of reasons, including the wind ministry, which brought me to this area, as well as we knew the school system was excellent. Thank you very much, Dr. Zupin, Principal St. Angel, for your service to our students. The school's reputation as well as our Audubon is excellent to us. Our family, and I do not know how many other families, but I do know our family has been badly let down by the abrupt change to the transportation policy and practice regarding buses in Audubon. So, Amos rode the bus every day to school during the whole year he was in kindergarten last year. We live about eight street crossings from the school, about half a mile. He has a six-year-old, you understand, having some hesitation about having a six-year-old walk that far unaccompanied. I know there are steps that could be taken to mitigate that hazard and make that a safe walk to school. And my understanding of the Indiana state code is that that responsibility falls to the school board, as the governing body of the school corporation, to figure out how that problem can be solved in partnership with parents and families. And to my understanding of recent board meetings, minutes, that that conversation, that discussion, to my knowledge, is not taking place. I'm speaking largely on behalf of my spouse. As a wind technician, I'm not home in the mornings, I leave before anyone gets up. But I will tell you, it's not only a challenge for my wife to get, not one, not two kids out the door on a certain timetable when she had been counting on the bus service this year, but also to find that out, because the day before school started, August eleventh, we still had not heard from our bus driver, which we, we had been told that those calls were still going out. We were starting to get a little nervous when it is the day before school starts. We called Mrs. Muller, who drove the bus for ages last year, and come to find out we're in a walking zone, which apparently we were supposed to somehow know, which we had no indication all of last year that we were, that we were being added to the bus route as some sort of a courtesy, which seems like that in the case we weren't actually in the bus zone at all, we just thought we were. I don't know how we were supposed to do that. So, there was clearly a failure of communication that we were put in that position and had to scramble. And we had it easier than some other families. We're making it work. It's been stressful to adjust, it's stressful to make it work, the stress falls disproportionately on my spouse, who can't be here because she has work tonight, but it has been stressful. I come to this, my wife and I really want to be part of the solution, not just complainers about the problem. We're here to offer ourselves as constituents and community members who want to improve the situation for ourselves and for other families. The board is responsible for figuring out how each student in the district can safely get to school, is my understanding. My wife got in touch with the state director of school transportation, and that's what we were pulled. So, we'd love to get in touch with you, Dr. Zupin, with Jennifer Wright, with whoever else needs to be a part of that conversation to figure out how we get the kind of safety infrastructure in place that's going to make it possible for us to practice a walk zone and not just add everyone to the car line. Whether that's going to be crossing guards, just eyes on the kids, whatever it's going to take. You probably know that, like any small town, the sidewalks in Audubon are spotty at best, and that's an issue. But these are all solvable problems, and I just want to address that we were, that we, and I don't know how many other families have been let down, and we are here to help come together, figure out how to support the members of the community. That's all I have.
Well, thank you. And first of all, I want to acknowledge, there was a failure in communication regarding a walking zone. To be honest, in my two years here, I didn't know we had one. And the reason why we didn't know we had one is because we've had buses run there. So, now with the shortage of drivers, not making excuses, but it's a factor, now they're, now we're going to utilize that walking zone. But then we got to remember, do people know there was a walking zone? So, I want to clearly state, yes, failure of communication with that. I do know that, and I'm not for sure if it's your wife or not, but I have somebody that I am meeting with, with Mrs. Wright, next week to discuss some walking zones.
That sounds like Jenna.
Okay, so I do know that other school corporations have worked together to get walking zones, and some of that entails of green pathways, and some of it might just be guards. So, that's our responsibility that he's talking about, is to safely get the kids to school. It doesn't say we have to use school buses, but we do need to make sure. So, you are right, we could communicate better, we can do better, and we will. We need to find some solutions. Now, a great solution would be to have about five new bus drivers apply tomorrow. But we do need to do this, and I do have a meeting scheduled. I wish I had an answer that says tomorrow morning, and I'll be fixed, but I don't want to make promises I can't keep. But we will look into this, and it sounds like I'll be talking with your wife about this.
Excellent, thank you so much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
With that, we move on to any comments from anybody from the board or superintendent?
Mine were just transportation. I know that it has been a bit of a challenge. I do know that any school corporation who changes their transportation has their challenges at the beginning of the year. I believe that by Friday, I think things will be better. I'm not saying that all the things will be handled, but we're making some strides. And please know that the changes are for good reasons. Just wanted to make everybody aware that I acknowledged that.
And we still are having the bus driver shortage?
We are, yes, yes. Now, on a positive note for the bus transportation, Oxford Library, I want to give a shout out to them. They have an after-school program that they are doing to help our Oxford students or anybody else free of charge. And they have such a large number that our buses were overflowing. Even our seventy-eight passenger bus is overflowing. So, we have a driver who will lead Prairie Crossing, starting today, she did that, in the white bus to take those students. So, it frees up capacity on our yellow buses and allows those students to take part in the after-school program, so.
They're offering that free of charge?
Oxford Library, yes, yes, yeah, it's very impressive, yeah. It's very looking.
Well, with that, I will adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
We have a few minutes, and then we have a work session.
Yep.
Okay, so, work session to discuss a variety of topics in order to get ready for future board meetings. Tonight, we have a couple of informal presentation or informational presentations. The first one, Judd Bars is here to explain the building corporation information as it relates to our funding, the bond projects, and then Brock Bowser from Baker Tilly to go over our financial information regarding Benton Community School Corporation. So I do want to let the board members, since we have presenters tonight, you as board members are encouraged to ask questions as they arise, to engage with our presenters. Anybody in the audience, if we could just wait until the end, and we'll have your chance to then talk to our presenters there, okay? So first, we're going to start with Judd, and I have asked him to be here because I think there's a misconception on our new storage and athletic annex. So I want to make some clarifications and then have Judd explain the financing part of that. So to clarify, this is a 100 by 100 building intended for storage of large athletic equipment, mats, hydro, whole vault pits, things like that. The existing, the, the rest of the building is for multipurpose, no equipment, just space for people. And so the equipment we are using are the batting cages, and they will be brought over from AKA Gym in order to be used in this new annexed building. There was a misconception of maybe this was a big building that had basketball hoops and a walking track for the community to use. No, that's not the case. That would be a nice thing for Benton Community, but that's, that's not what we have here. So I just wanted to, to be clear on that. And the reason is for storage, but it's also to help with scheduling conflicts, baseball and softball during inclement weather. If they go right after school, then they take the time of basketball or volleyball even, or they have to wait until six o'clock in the morning the next day or late at night. So we're trying to help with some scheduling there. So I just wanted to make sure everybody was clear on what this building was and was not. And then also, there are questions on the building corporation that we used with the bonds. There's some misconceptions. And so I thought you could, and you were here a couple of times to explain that, but I just thought you could explain it one more time.
Sure.
Just to make sure everybody's clear on that.
Ready for that?
Sure.
So the idea behind a building corporation is school corporations can't issue debt. And so the legislature provides a means for them to do kind of the equivalent of, and it's kind of, it's what everybody does, and there's laws that enable this, but you can transfer, you transfer the real estate to a building corporation, and that's how all of the Benton Community Schools were built, by building corporations. And then the building corporations issue bonds, which is like a mortgage, and the school corporation leases the buildings from the building corporation, and those lease payments paid on the bonds. So the bonds are, you know, 20, 30, 40-year-old bonds. And so, like, for instance, in Otterbin, the, until March of this year, an original building corporation owned the buildings there. It was the Benton, Benton Community School Corporation, Building Corporation, Benton Community School Building Corporation. And that was intended to own the Otterbin buildings until they paid off a bond there, which they did. The bond was taken out in 1993, and it was paid off, and the property was just never transferred back. But that's typically what you do. After the bond is paid off, they transfer it back to the school corporation. So if you went to the GIS website for Benton County, and you searched under Benton Community Schools, you'd get hits, because that, that would tell me that none of that property is mortgaged right now, being held by a building corporation. And if you search for Benton Community, Benton Community School Improvement Building Corporation, Benton School Improvement Building Corporation is the name of your current one, you'll find that it owns most of the school buildings, like Prairie Crossing, Otterbin, B.C., all of that is owned by the building corporation, because there are outstanding bonds in one form or another, out there, being paid off. And so in March of this year, we transferred from the old building corporation at Otterbin to this new building corporation that we've been using since Prairie Crossing was built, that real estate to set up the new bond issues that, that are coming for Otterbin's improvements. And then a bond issue will be done in like September, and a lease will be signed between the school corporation and the building corporation. That'll be the same term as whatever the bond term is, the mortgage term is, and payments will start being made to the building corporation, who then turns around and pays the bondholders that put up the money. And so that is what a municipal bond is, is, are these, are people who invest in these debt devices to provide lower-than-market-rate interest usually for building projects. And the, the benefit to the people who buy bonds is their, the income on those bonds is income tax-free. That's the benefit. To encourage people to buy bonds, and I'm not talking treasury bonds, but to buy building corporation bonds, the income that they generate is interest, or income tax-free. And so, like, I had a client in Otterbin who had 26 different municipal bonds, and he literally would sit around and look for bonds that paid, they always pay out like twice a year, and he would find something that paid off on like the first week in January and the first week in July, and then he'd find a bond that would pay off on the third week in January and the third week in July. And he had it set up, so he had this stream of bi-weekly payments back that were all these different bonds, and then none of the income from that, those bonds was taxable to him. So it's, it's not as, now there are a lot of institutions that buy those, not just individuals. It used to be, back in the day, like back in 93, there was probably more individuals that owned bonds, interest in bonds than institutions. And now I would say it's probably the opposite. I would say institutions are usually behind most of the bonds these days. But it's just the device that the legislature intends for school corporations to use without incurring debt themselves. They transfer the property to the building corporation, the building corporation leases it back and gets payments over time to pay down the bonds. So like when Prairie Crossing was built, there was a big bond issue, and as that's gradually getting paid down, you're, that building corporation is going to have other bonds that are going to take that, some of that space, I think is, is the goal. But
Yeah.
The use of the, the building corporations is standard, I mean, there's not another procedure for it. That's what you do. That's what all schools do, in Indiana at least.
We appreciate your reemphasizing that, so we can answer some of the questions.
Sure.
Judd, the people that are involved in the building corporation, do they just need to be there by name? Do they really have a task to speak of?
They, so, I would say, so there are three board members for the building corporation, and it's been reconstituted. They generally fall by the wayside after a project is underway and bonds are issued. They really don't have any duties after that until the next thing comes up. And so we, one of the three board members from the 1993 building corporation was deceased, and the other two were just inactive. So we reconstituted the board, the, the school board does that, names those people. And there was a bank in Fort Wayne that was the original holder of the bonds on the 1993 bonds, and they were contacted to confirm that, that there was full payment on the 1993 bond, and they needed to release it, which cleared the title to it. Then we transferred it over to our current building corporation, so that it was titled like all the rest of the building. We, we want, we want all of the school buildings that are using building corporations to use the same building corporation. We don't have separate building corporations. In Warren County, they, they'll do separate building corporations, and it gets confusing trying to figure out, like, what's the Seager Building Corporation versus the Warren Elementary School Building Corporation? Sometimes it gets confusing in meetings. It's like a fast game ping pong to follow what, what the hell is going on with the money. And it's a lot simpler when you have one entity. I'll say that by a long shot. You can look at a sheet of paper and know your position at any point in time without having to flip pages or anything. You just, you can see it and.
And those board members are all Benton County?
Yes, uh-huh. Yeah, so currently you have Jack Duncan and
Mike Selene.
Mike Selene and Pat Clare are the three board members.
And then what is their function? What do they do?
So they, they are the, they kind of listen to what the plans are for, from the school board, because the school board appoints them. And because we need a separate entity holding title to those assets, they are the ones that sign the bond, that sign the mortgage to put the bond out, and sign the lease with the school corporation, with the school board, to lease it back to the school. That's really all they do. But it's all public meeting, all advertised, there's, there are no shortcuts. It's all due process and whatnot, but.
And we held those meetings, and then you, you met with those individuals as well?
Yes, uh-huh.
Yeah.
And so they, and so they signed the deed to get it over into the existing building corporation. That was one thing that they did, and they signed the preliminary lease that's been kind of negotiated that will be for the right term and for the right amount of money to pay down the bonds that are anticipated. They've seen all of that, and I think we have another meeting with you all in September. The bonds are tentatively set to be sold September 24th, and from October 2nd to October 9th, the school corporation obtains the signatures on the closing documents of the president, president and secretary of both the building corporation and the school corporation. So there'll be one more meeting, it looks like, at the end of September or early October to wrap it up. And then it'll be, they'll be sold, the proceeds of the bond will be sold, and that will generate the money that will pay for the project. That's, it's just like a mortgage. I mean, you could literally substitute mortgage for bond, and you'd be talking about the same animal. It's a dead instrument.
Any more board questions? How about anybody?
So in the past, like in the 93 bond, when that was written, and it's paid off now, is it retired, or did it get refunded again?
It was paid off, retired.
So then our taxes dropped down because that came off?
It, it depends, it, it, so, so that, what I'm talking about using one building corporation for all building projects in the corporation, in the school corporation, it, it not necessarily went down to zero. There may have been something else added, like Prairie Crossing was, was added at some, at some point to existing debt. I don't, there's a limit on what you can have outstanding. And the mortgage on the, the bond on the Otterbin project was paid off. While that was being paid off, were other projects started?
Yeah.
Yes, there were. Because, for instance, Prairie Crossing would have been started during that time.
And part of my presentation shows outstanding debt as of today in the proposed projects, and how, how it fits in with the overall debt structure. So you'll see a picture of outstanding debt in the poster.
So in the past, before you did with the, the building corporation, did the public have to approve any major projects? If you're going to do a new bond, then it had to be put out to the public to support that?
The, the same processes, public processes followed on old projects. The building corporation procedure isn't new.
So, so you're saying that the public still has to support or can vote, no, we don't want to continue with this project, or we don't want to have this new project, whatever it would be? Because it's, so, so maybe I completely misunderstood. What I've read is that the leasing is a way to circumvent the debt out, the, the debt, maximum debt that you're allowed to have by the state. And then school boards were refund, refunding bonds at their maturity, so they just continued, which gets back to where you say we're neutral to taxes. And I still argue that we're not neutral, because that should have dropped our taxes because the bonds paid off, but we just keep going, and.
Basically piggybacking. What's changed in legislation is here where you can't do that anymore.
I can, I can talk a little bit about that. So yes and no. So it limited what are called general obligation bonds, but it didn't limit first mortgage bonds. And that was intentional by the General Assembly, because they saw a lot of school corporations were issuing GO bonds at one or two-year maturity to keep that payment going. So they, essentially, that is no longer an option for a lot of school corporations. The project we proposed through Benton Schools is a first mortgage bond. So the General Assembly did not, was the right term, not eliminate that as an option, as debt as a true.
And so what were you gonna?
The, I was going to say the amount of the. The, I was going to say the amount of the Otterbin old, old bond, the ninety-three bond, that pertained to Otterbin. That building corporation didn't own any other land other than Otterbin. And so that tells me, I mean, just kind of academically, that tells me that the debt was only on the Otterbin school. So whatever the improvement, the project was in nineteen ninety-three was secured by the real estate in Otterbin only. No other school corporation assets were ever titled in the name of that building corporation. And I don't, I just tried to find the dollar amount of that mortgage. I don't know what it was. But it was paid off and never released. So it was literally a mortgage that's on, at the recorder's office. This has never been released and no one's making payments on it because it's paid off.
Right.
And so we asked them to release it. So it cleared the title. I've got one other thing that follows up on what you originally just said.
Okay.
And about when the public gets involved to limit the size or to kill a project, I would say that takes place earlier, not at the stage where the, the bond is being sold.
Right.
They, I would say we're past that point. But the public is involved in that. By the public notice in the newspapers is involved in that process. As the project is sized and the lease is sized and the bond is sized to determine how much is going to be needed to be borrowed to build, that process happened.
Okay. Would you, and, and I don't mean to be combative, but I'm just, I want to make sure that I am looking at the correct facts. Holly said last time, and then I think you maybe attended the BZA meeting with Sean. And said, and it's up there, multiple public meetings where this particular building was being discussed. And I think that is extremely misleading when you, because when you say that in a public meeting and everybody hears that, they're like, well, yeah, I mean, they talked about it then apparently. No, you did. And, and I have the minutes that I can go back. I've gone back and I read through all the minutes from January to present. And the only time this was ever talked about on that building out there was the, the Ogden project and, and the ones that definitely probably need to be done and the storage project at B C. We never talked about being a three million dollar building or, or, you know.
Sports annex.
Sports annex. I just think there's so many other places, which, which it's a done deal because you guys knew the, the July first deadline, I guess, because of bonds, that's when that bill went into effect. And so everything was paid for before, can't correct?
He, he just, he clarified.
Yeah, technically these bonds are not subject to that joint.
Okay. So, and, and anyway, I just want to make sure that we're spending our money wisely. We're trying to do it on the county level too, and that's a struggle as well. But I also, like I said in the last meeting, I think when that referendum comes up, I think there's going to be so much opposition and pushback on that that the teachers are going to really, they're the ones that are going to take the hit. And we need to be frugal about our money before we get to that point so that you guys don't have to worry about, you know, getting rid of staff and AP programs and all that stuff.
And that was the other comment that was made at the last meeting that didn't settle well with me is if we build these complexes, it's going to bring the people to county. If you look at the statistics of where these kids are moving to for their education, it's not here because of what we're not able to provide. If we don't put our money in the education first, then, then develop your talent for your sports. I mean, I've raised my children through this school corporation. I was raised through here. I felt I got a great opportunity education, but I mean, it's not like we were going anywhere else in the eighties either, from the nineties. But in today's world, these parents will travel miles to take their children to a different school. And I think, and I, I don't, that's not solely on sports. It really isn't. And I've seen what these teachers have lost out here at these schools, the things that are not provided. But then we're turning around, we're spending all this money on tracks and, and buildings and tennis courts. And I'm not saying they don't need it. They do. I mean, they should have the opportunity just like anybody else. But is our money going to the right place? Are we, are we, I went through all the mechanics with that gentleman right there. And I probably got one of the better educations that you could ask for just from that man. And it means a lot. It really does. And I'm not going to say, I'm not going to bash anybody. I'm not. I mean, you guys have a tough job just like we do, sitting where we sit. It isn't easy. But when we're talking funding and know the dollars that we've got to deal with every day and make sure the people of this county are taken care of, whether it's the adults, clear down to the children because we're huge on children, this is a, it's a hot topic for us. It really is. And I want them to have all the availability of sports, but their education comes first. That's the way I was brought up and that will never change. And my kid's education came way before our sports part of it did. And my boys play football. My daughter just graduated college with, on the dean's list. Proud as all it can be with her. John sitting in the same spot. His kids play sports out there. They've graduated with honors. They've done well for themselves. We've got something to be proud of here. But I don't want to lose sight of the focus of where, where, where the kids come first. And my opinion, this is my opinion, nobody else's, is education should come before the sports side of it. Until you've proven yourself in the education side to where we can, where we're turning out kids that, that have a chance of life when they leave our, leave our school system. That they know the ins and outs day to day and just don't hit the wall and get smacked in the face because, oh, well, we, we didn't know this going into it, then, then we've done something, right? That's what we've done. We've, we've produced a child that has had all the facets it needed of that, of the education process by the teachers. Edie Fisher sits in here. The things that woman does is absolutely amazing. The program she puts on, the time she puts into it, the summertime to make sure all the other teachers have what they need. That means something. And so do the coaches at night, spend their weekends and their nights coaching plus teach and do all that. I've watched that, I've been on the sidelines with them. They put their time in too. They do. And they deserve probably more than what they get. But this all comes down, in my, my opinion, it comes down to we need to have the education first. And it's just frustrating with how this was presented, what I walked into that day and what was sitting on the table with those drawings. And, you know, and again, my opinion, I don't feel that the public was informed as they should have been. Because when we sat here at the last meeting, it was classified as a storage annex. But it gets off to the north side of the building. It's got a twelve-foot door. Everything else is a complex. So.
Okay. So I, I, I hear you and I do want to not spend too much time on this.
No, I'm fine. That's, that's it. I'm good.
As we transition, because I do, I, I, I believe that your portion of, it's a device. It's, it's a mechanism of funding. So I, I don't think anybody has questions on that.
Nope.
I do think that, that the presentation on our financial condition will be helpful. And I do want you to know that our July retreat that Chris here mentioned, you know, we're halfway through the referendum. We knew we would need to make some decisions, have some options. And indicated that perhaps we need to talk with the commissioners because we're all in this together. So us understanding each other is important. If there are other ways for us to get the word out, because in our world, we had meetings after meetings and public meetings, and Gail has been here. I put things out on social media. I share the board presentations with the Benton Review. But if there are other things to do that, in your world too, because you're in the same boat we are. You'll have people show up at your meetings and say, we're the two doers.
That's why I hate being on this side of the conversation, which you guys do.
Do we need to do something different? I'm not opposed to doing that. But I do want you to know that Edie Fisher, you're right. And she was hired to do this. And whether you know it or not, we have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on curricular materials. And Abby Spitznagle tonight talked about purging. Those teachers want to hang on to old materials. And this group right here said, huh-uh. We invested, and, and you've been here on, on the materials that math and language arts cost us. They better use it. And so we do spend money on, on that. And it's not always at the forefront. Is that something we need to put out there? It's our day-to-day operation. So sometimes we get caught up like you do, I, I assume. You're doing your day-to-day job. You're grinding. Do we need to stop and tell the community what we're doing? I, I'm open to that. I think you're open to that.
I, I would address something because you brought up something very, and, and this is where I really look for you guys to help us coming up to this next referendum, because you had hit the nail on the head. The opportunities and the programs that our school corporation has is because of the referendum. So this pool of money that we're using for the structures and stuff, we can't use any of that money for education.
I understand.
Yep. And so that's where it's so important. And we want you guys to help us tell the community, this is what this referendum has done, which we're, that's what our big retreat was. We want the community to know, hey, this is what we were able to achieve by having this referendum. We more than likely tonight are, are going that way. And yes, that was a huge topic of how's this going to look when we do this structure, but we're going to turn around and make, we have to let the public know that that money can't do anything for education and the programs. It's a referendum. And that's where we, us losing kids, we don't have the monies to continue those programs. We don't want to take them away. The success of your kids and your kids and your kids and hopefully my kids is because of the choices we're, the hard choices we're going to make like you guys have to make. And so that's really what we were hoping to achieve with you guys, because also we wanted your guys' input on. So we appreciate you coming and doing that.
And, and I want to turn it over to Brock so we don't lose sight.
Yeah, sorry, guys.
I, I will say, in the end, we may have philosophical differences on those bonds. I, I don't want to play semantics. I call it neutral because I believe they're neutral. You're, you're saying, hey, they're not neutral if they can fall off. As long as we understand each other, we don't have to agree, but I think we need to at least understand the perspectives. And I think Brock can, can share some of that. And I, I just don't want to lose, you know, I don't want us to be here till ten.
If you could give me just a couple minutes, let me just hit some, some.
Are you going to stay?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And, and then I'll, I'll be quiet. When I go back to, well, I'm not going to read it. And when I go back to the, the minutes, we can discuss that another time as far as whether the public knew. Public didn't knew, no, because it was not put in any of the minutes what it actually was. But when we're sitting here and we're looking at spending money on a big project like that, had we not spent the money on that, and I understand, because we have the same issue where you can't take money out of certain funds or whatever. But had you not spent the money on that, and that would have dropped off the tax base and our taxes came down when the referendum came up, it would have been a lot easier sell that, hey, you know what, maybe we go ahead and continue that. We, we dropped a little bit here, so we'll just continue that. But we're not doing that. We're, we want to be neutral where we're keeping our taxes high. And we are very high. But when we look at the programs that we've got at the school, like he was saying, I just want to just read a couple of them. For, and I got this off the internet through the state, academic progress ratings. Tri-county seventy-one percent better than any other school. West Lafayette sixty-five percent. Seager forty-three percent. Benton Central's third, three percent. Test score ratings, West Lafayette ninety-two percent. Tri-county seventy-six, Seager fifty-six, Benton Central fifty-two. We're half. We're right in the middle. We're, we need to work on the product that we're putting out. The worst thing though, that I learned in there, is when you start looking at the low-income people, Tri-county, nine out of ten kids that are low-income excel every year or they progress every year. Seager, eight out of ten. Rensselaer, seven out of ten. Pretty good. Benton Central, four. The only one worse than this, which was kind of surprising, was West Lafayette, which, but they probably don't have. They've got a much lower low-income percentage. These are the things that I look at and I'm like, man, I wish we would spend money on things like that and we put out a helpful, better product than we would put a new building. So that's all I'll say. Thank you.
So Judd, you are welcome to stay, but you're also welcome to.
I'm going to go. So I got one more meeting tonight.
Yeah, that's mine.
Thanks, Judd.
I'm, I'm going to turn it over then to Brock and Baker Tilly. And as we're getting his presentation.
Thank you, Judd.
Just to clarify though, we can't vote on anything that's not a public meeting. It has to be public.
Can you hit?
Thirty seconds. There you go.
Okay. So do you have his presentation that's going to be?
Yeah, it's pretty much ready to go.
Uh, you know what? So do you need to exit?
It's going to be a process of escape. And then it's going to end.
Close it out.
While they're working on that, I'm going to forewarn you that I will probably move around a little bit just because I've been sitting most of the day. So I hope that's all right. If we think the microphone cannot hear me, I will walk closer to the microphone. So please, please let me know. So Dr. Zupin promised me four hours for this evening. These are, these are good conversations that are occurring. They don't happen in every community. So I think more of the dialogue, because especially this part, I heard you gentlemen might be on the county commissioners, county council. So some of the content I'm going through tonight will impact you almost as equally on the property tax side. So these type of conversations can be really powerful because as communities work together to address some of the challenges, the awareness really needs to be enhanced. And there's opportunities to, as I get on my soapbox, opportunities to work together to try to quantify some of the impacts coming up.
Have you guys seen this green okay? Do you want any of us?
Yeah, there's extra chairs up here.
So as we bring that up. Bring that up, four main things we will be talking about this evening. So part of it's going to be educational. So as we look to Senate Enrolled Act One, start thinking about the impact to homeowners, ag land, rental property, business, commercial property, business, personal property. Try to give everyone an understanding of what's going to happen to net assessed value or this direction where it may be going. Not only in twenty twenty-six, but through twenty thirty-one, twenty thirty-two. So S E A one is, is a big piece. You heard Dr. Zupin mention, we wanted to sit down and do this. I think the original ask was February, March. It was that time, as you probably all recall, the General Assembly was heating up. There were a lot of bills being introduced about property tax. Some of the changes that ultimately landed on, but we chose to take a step back to see what happened with the General Assembly. Then trying to assess what, what all the impact is drawn, might be this summer, which brings us to today. So we've been averaging one or two presentations across the state of Indiana on legislative impact. So we've worked with approximately sixty-five, seventy percent of school districts across the state of Indiana. So, again, I apologize for walking around. So we're going to talk about the legislative session and the changes that are occurring with net assessed value. We're going to get into some fiscal metrics that the state of Indiana either requires you to compile and report out or ones that are available publicly. Just try to allow everyone to recall what some of those impacts are, trends are. We're going to talk about the financial projections on the operating funds. Then ultimately, we're going to finish it up with just a reminder of existing and with the proposed debt so we can remind ourselves what the debt structuring could look like. Okay, great. Thank you. So a quick reminder, I think I was here back two thousand nineteen-ish. So what's happened over the past five years, why things are so different for schools than six years ago, now five years ago, when the referendum was approved in June of twenty twenty? No secret, almost feels like a lifetime ago with COVID. The, the needs of the community were different than what they are. The the needs of the community were different than what they are today. But after coming out of COVID, Benton Schools, like many other rural schools throughout the state of Indiana, in nationally, for that matter, seeing seeing some enrollment declines. But there was a record amount of funding coming from the federal bills. So COVID relief, I think for all municipality types and even some businesses, had record funding. And that led to, no secret, inflationary pressures in twenty twenty-two. But on top of that, you all may recall what was going on during the Indiana General Assembly during that time. There was a lot of debate about what's the right way to educate kids from a curriculum standpoint. I'm not a teacher by trade. Dr. Zupin or somebody else who has more educational experience can talk circles around me. I just recall that there was a lot of debate going on at that time about methodology, standardized tests, et cetera. But what we saw in twenty twenty-two from a national perspective is a record number of resignations and staff shortages in the education. Twenty twenty-three, there was another record set of staff shortages and resignations. More inflationary pressures, I think everyone, not just here at school district, feel that felt that at home in twenty twenty-three. Then there was a new standardized test, I learned that was passed. So there was new tests that teachers had to uh begin to educate toward with these new curriculum standards. Again, I'm not the expert, I can talk about it from a high level. Twenty twenty-four, more inflationary pressures. There was another record set with staff resignations and shortages. And now the state of Indiana is implementing new high school diploma standards. You all know this, but it comes back to all of these new standards are being implemented. But now with funding, federal funding going away, in twenty twenty-five, the Senate Enrolled Act and House of Lieutenant One, the state revenue that supports classroom expenditures. So when you think of state revenue, think of classroom. The revenue given by the state of Indiana in twenty twenty-five is pretty limited over the next couple of years. So it doesn't keep up with what we're expecting with inflation. So you've got federal challenge on funding being a cliff in twenty twenty-four. You've got limited state dollars coming in beginning of twenty twenty-five. Oh, by the way, there was another record set this past summer with 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 record resignations and shortages. So kind of like an up and down flow of funding, like twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-four break, had a lot of federal funding, had more state funding coming in, was supporting the inflationary impact. But now with Senate Enrolled Act One, you have federal reduction, limited state dollars, and there's going to be impact of Senate Enrolled Act One as well for local dollars. So the three tiers of funding could be impacted in the years to come by the Missouri.
Hit the the white screen, go into the regular screen just a half.
Oh, nice. So let's get into some of the summary of legislative changes. So year by year, you can see it's not just a one-year implementation of these new changes, but actually it's going to be a six-year implementation over the years on what these different property classifications are going to receive for deductions. But let's start here at twenty twenty-five. First things first, July first, twenty twenty-five, all schools have to have a minimum salary of forty-five thousand. Benton Schools check. Teacher compensation as a percent of state funding. So we talked about compensation that's salary and benefits. At least two-thirds, approximately two-thirds of your state funding has to go toward teacher compensation. Benton Schools check. If your debt service tax rate is greater than seventy cents, every new project has to go to referendum. If Benton Schools does not hear that, don't anticipate we'll ever get hear that. There's a lot of school districts, probably about thirty if you're in that range. The one I do want to try to bold is all referendum now has to go to an even year November ballot. So you may recall up to this point, you could go on a primary or you could go on an NPO year. There will be a handful of school districts who will pursue a November of twenty twenty-five ballot for renewal. Benton Schools did not choose to do that as of July first, because you had to make that decision July first, twenty twenty-five. Now, if you seek renewal, the earliest you can do it is November twenty twenty-six, or you have to wait until November of twenty twenty-eight or November twenty thirty. So again, only even years. A lot of school districts, and this is part of the strategy that many employ, a lot of school districts like to take two swings at a operating referendum or any type of referendum approval. So a lot of districts who may have a referendum expiring in twenty twenty-eight, not suggesting that Benton Schools take this approach, I'm just mentioning it for reference. There are some schools who will pursue who will pursue a renewal in November of twenty twenty-six. So if they're not successful, they get another swing at it in November of twenty twenty-eight before it expires. Again, not suggesting that's the strategy, I'm just sharing it as reference only. Then for the gentleman in the back, I'm sorry to catch your names, but you brought up the point about a one-year cool one-year geo bond cooling off. Yes, that is, take took effect July first, twenty twenty-five. You'll see later on the projects for consideration that have been approved and proposed are first mortgage bonds. So they do not fall within this geo bond designation, so that's why there's a difference between the two. But more in the meat and potato of our presentation is from twenty twenty-six on. Pay twenty twenty-six taxes will be the first year that new deductions will be implemented in the state of Indiana. We'll get into some of the detail here later. But your main takeaway is twenty twenty-six is the first of six years where increased deductions will occur for homeowners. So when you think of homeowners, think of the one percent property bucket. That means that they're paying no more than one percent of their market value on the home, unless you have a referendum. So homeowners are getting an increase in deductions of the next six years. The two percent property bucket, so who are the two percent property bucket? Residential rental, so a home rental, ag land, and long-term care are part of that two percent bucket, because they're not paying more than two percent of their gross assets value for a certain period. Then the three percent bucket, business, personal property, there will be potentially some relief coming as well with some different thresholds that we'll get into a little bit later. There are some additional budgetary additions that won't impact Benton Schools, at least at this point. So another change, second year of implementation in twenty twenty-seven that we'll go through in detail, twenty twenty-eight's the third year. Two things I want to mention in twenty twenty-eight. Charter school revenue share takes effect in twenty twenty-eight. At this point, the numbers, because it has to be a charter school revenue share in twenty twenty-eight based upon the formula, either the maximum of a hundred kids or two percent of your ADM. Benton Schools is based upon twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five numbers is not impacted by that charter school share in twenty twenty-eight. It has to be kids who attend a brick and mortar charter school, not a virtual charter school. The last bullet point does impact Benton Schools, will also impact the county with the change in LIT. So local income tax, you're paying, part of your your paycheck is going to a local income tax. Right now, things a hundred and thirty-four thousand memory serves to what Benton Schools is receiving for LIT. It goes away under the current laws for SCA one. So there is a revenue impact beginning in twenty twenty-eight because of this legislation. In all entities, county, library, uh, who else? Um, county, library, townships will have some mechanisms, cities and towns will have mechanisms to replace LIT revenue with some new options. Schools specifically were mentioned as not having any option to either lobby the county or the a city or town to request it. We're not done. In twenty twenty-nine, year four of implementation of new deductions on all property class types. Twenty thirty, year five, then ultimately twenty thirty-one is when we bottom out from a deduction scheme. Here's what I'll mention is, there is some possibility that the General Assembly will continue to tinker with property taxes. So everything I'm sharing with you tonight is based upon what we know today. If I'm standing here a year from now, it could look a little bit different, because I think there is a desire to somehow tinker with property taxes in some fashion in my opinion. So if you're a homeowner, in twenty twenty-five, you are receiving your pay twenty twenty-five taxes. So a reminder, if home state properties are your dwelling and plus up to one acre property. So twenty twenty-five, and we'll look at an example here next slide. You're receiving a flat forty-eight thousand dollar home state deduction, assuming you applied for the home state deduction. Then you're getting a supplemental home state deduction of thirty-seven and a half percent. So what's occurring, if I could try to give you that elevator speech on what's happening over the next six years for your property taxes. This is great for homeowners. You're transitioning out from a flat dollar amount, so going from forty-eight thousand dollar standard deduction to zero. And we're implementing a full percentage based system where your current supplemental home state deduction is thirty-seven and a half percent, and it's going to be sixty-six point seven percent in twenty thirty-one. So we're going from a flat amount based system to a percentage. If you did a calculation in twenty twenty-five, I've seen the percentage based upon home values for these calculations to be somewhere between forty-five to fifty-five percent depending upon your your home value. By twenty thirty-one, two-thirds of your property will be tax deductible from a net assessed value scheme. I think if this board knows, if your net assessed value goes up or goes down, tax rate may go up. So what the General Assembly found as they were implementing the system is, well, net assessed value's going down, which means tax rates are going to go up. So that doesn't necessarily mean that tax bills are going to go down. So they added this additional caveat of a supplemental home state credit. Probably you've heard that, three hundred dollar credit, three hundred dollar savings, and that's what this is. So a supplemental home state credit of, coming out the bottom line, that you will receive the lesser of ten percent of your property tax bill or three hundred dollars. So if your tax bill is fifteen hundred dollars, you're going to get a hundred and fifty dollar credit. So the lesser of ten percent or three hundred dollars. And that is in perpetuity as we understand it, and that has no life cycle or ending. There are some additional credits for the sixty-five and older. I think the sixty-five and older, it's an income-based credit. As you can see there at the bottom, what those income thresholds are, with the promise that sixty-five and older will not pay more than two percent annually year to year increase. There's a disabled homeowner credit as well. So you're probably thinking, well, that's all well and good, but what does it mean to me from a homeowner's standpoint? So if we pull the average home value in Benton Schools right now, according to the U.S. Census Bureau, a hundred fifty-three thousand, seven hundred dollars. If you'd like to do the math, go ahead and do it. Hundred fifty-three thousand, seven hundred dollars minus forty-eight thousand times point three seven five. So at twenty twenty-five, that average Benton Schools homeowner is paying a net assessed value of about sixty-six thousand dollars. Everybody see how I got that? So as you saw on the prior slide, hopefully this works, whoops, nope. So as we go back, you can see we're increasing that supplemental home state deduction year by year. So for twenty twenty-six, we're keeping the flat forty-eight thousand dollar home state deduction, but the supplemental home state deduction increases to forty-two percent. So if we assume there's no growth in net assessed, or excuse me, market value, which there will be, but let's assume just for apples to apples comparison, the same value, net assessed value actually drops to sixty-three thousand, so there's a four percent drop in net assessed value for the average homeowner. What we've seen so far, the school district is located in three counties, Warren, Benton, Tippecanoe. Forgot to introduce my colleague, Ethan Melton, by the way, Ethan, thank you for pulling these data. Two counties have have certified their net assessed value to date, Warren County and Benton County. And we've actually seen both of those county percentages decrease comparing twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six. And this is one of the drivers because of that increased deduction. More deductions changing in twenty twenty-seven, going from forty-eight thousand to forty thousand, then increasing supplemental home state deductions, so that same apples to apples comparison. You can see ultimately until twenty thirty-one, when we quote bottom out, that average homeowner will pay the least amount, if their market value doesn't decrease, will pay the least amount of AV in twenty thirty-one. What you're seeing is a four percent, three percent, three percent, three percent, five percent, six percent decrease in net assessed value. So over this time horizon, this average homeowner, their market value would have to increase four point three percent per year just to keep the net assessed value flat. I'll say it again just for dramatic effect. This average homeowner would have to see a four point three percent increase in gross assessed value to keep this on average flat around sixty-six thousand dollars. So we've seen more than four percent past few years, but we've not seen that over the past ten, fifteen years. So your guess is as good as mine, what's going to happen over the next couple of years. But again, this credit is not part of net assessed value, this supplemental home state credit. First restaurant I thought, Harveys. It's like one of Harveys with coupon, and then getting that cost taken off the bottom line. Just means you keep it in your pocket, which means the school district, library, county, they're not collecting that revenue. So the DLGF, Department of Local Government Finance, estimates this credit in twenty twenty-six to be about eighty-nine thousand dollars to Benton Communities. So it's great for homeowners, but there is a revenue impact to the operations for Benton Schools. Sorry, so I've been blinding people with this reflection on my watch. So now it's transitioning to the two percent properties. So what are the two percent properties again? Residential rental properties, so home rentals, ag land, and long-term care. So this group, on a holistic standpoint, never received a deduction. So you can see in twenty twenty-five, no deduction. Beginning in twenty twenty-six, transitioning a six percent deduction all the way until twenty thirty-one for ag land, rental property, home rentals, and long-term care. Approximately one-third of the market value now will be tax deductible. So you've got homeowners getting increased deductions, two percent bucket getting deductions, which is leading that way to a decrease in net assessed value. What happens when net assessed value goes down? Tax rate probably goes up. So this is a twenty-year snapshot of ag land throughout the state of Indiana. There is a formula that is that's been designed by the Indiana General Assembly that determines the base rate per acre throughout the state of Indiana. So it's not like Benton County has one special base rate per acre. Monroe County has a different one, Tippecanoe County has a different one. Throughout the state of Indiana, there is one base rate per acre. So the gray represents the numbers that have been certified by the state of Indiana, Department of Local Government Finance. In twenty twenty-five, the base rate value per acre is two thousand one hundred and twenty dollars. Excuse me, no, Ethan, it's two thousand three hundred ninety, right?
That was the original.
That was the original, thank you. So they changed it in twenty twenty-six, I'm sorry, pay twenty twenty-six. They had certified two thousand three hundred ninety, so we were expecting about a six, seven percent bump per acre. The General Assembly changed the methodology on the capitalization rate, so it went from two thousand three The General Assembly changed the methodology on the capitalization rate, so went from two thousand, three hundred and ninety now to two thousand, one hundred and twenty. So this does not even, not count the six percent deduction as well. This is just a straight base rate calculation. So farmland, farmers will see a drop in assessed value in paid 2026. LSA, Legislative Services Agency, is projecting that, here in the blue, this has not been certified, this is a projection. But LSA is projecting a six percent increase in base rate, but if you compare 2027 to 2025, you can see 2027 is projected to be lower than 2025. And again, that does not include the twelve percent induction that will be eligible for in 2027. So now transitioning to the three percent bucket. So who's a three percent bucket? Commercial and industrial or business personal property. Business personal property changing what is called the de minimis amount. So for those of you who may own business personal property, you complete what's called a Form 103, get your aggregate amount of business personal property. So when that aggregate amount is less than eighty thousand in your 2025 taxes or 2026 taxes, you're not paying any property taxes on it because it's considered to be de minimis. That de minimis threshold is increasing to two million in 2027. But it's great for businesses, great for farmers who own combines and tractors potentially if that aggregate is less than two million. But there is, it is going to potentially impact because that de minimis amount increases, net assessed value could go down, which means tax rate could go up. So de minimis, that takes effect in paid 2027 taxes. Additionally, there's this thirty percent floor. So any new equipment put into place, purchased in this calendar year, right now, business personal property is, after you depreciate it, there's a floor of thirty percent. If you purchase new equipment in this calendar year, that new equipment is no longer, longer subject to that thirty percent floor. So a lot of CFOs, a lot of farmers will probably do it, because I would do the exact same thing if I were their shoes. It's, well, it's now the time to replace equipment in order to not be subject to that thirty percent floor. Since that is such a business, individual-based scenario, it's really hard to predict what could happen with this property type. So we'll have to monitor that, and as net assessed values roll out, try to measure what the impact is. So one percent deduction, two percent deduction, now three percent deduction with business personal property.
What do you mean by a property floor? Floor, what do you mean by, when you say floor?
Say a floor. So think in terms, I'm going to use a high dollar figure. So let's say there's a manufacturing company. They have ten million dollars of manufacturing equipment as business personal property. Typically, accountants will depreciate that over maybe five or ten years, or whatever the useful life of that equipment is. So let's use ten million dollars as an example. And let's say it has a ten-year useful life. So after seven years right now, that ten million dollar equipment still has a three million dollar value. So they'll continue to pay three million dollars of assessment on that business personal property. If they replace that equipment, purchase new in 2025, there's no longer, there's no longer a floor for that three million dollars. So as it depreciates, there's no limitation for that three million dollars of thirty percent. This goes away where ultimately they may not pay any property taxes on potentially.
Okay, thank you.
That answer your question? It's a good question. So with that mindset and thinking in terms of what these deductions are, you always want to be mindful of who are the largest taxpayers. So Benton Schools, an obligation you have is having debt outstanding, and if you heard Mr. Barst talk about investors, you have to update them on an annual basis of who your largest ten taxpayers are. So here is what we reported this past summer for the largest ten taxpayers as a percent of your net assessed value. So the smoke test we always do on this type of report is look at this total number. That means it's twenty percent of your total net assessed value is with these, top, these ten taxpayers. For your rating, Benton Schools has a rating just like your own personal credit score. So the school district's credit score, one of the metrics they monitor is this twenty percent. Typically, rating agencies like to see that being somewhere between twelve to fifteen percent to be considered a diverse tax base. It just means that you're high risk because if one of these were no longer used, if, or the farming operation wouldn't have business, you're at risk because it could affect your overall net assessed value. Your takeaway is just know that your top ten taxpayers are about twenty percent of your total net assessed value. So let's start looking at some of the metrics. So this is a stoplight feature. So the state of Indiana requires you, every January, you all probably remember, every January, you get these fiscal indicator report. So the state of Indiana requires you to review eight indicators. ADM, which is your average daily membership or enrollment, what your fund balances are, whether you're running a surplus or deficit, your fund balance as a percent of expenditures, revenue by type, referendum revenue as a percent of total revenue, net assessed value, tax rate. We added these two additional ones because we think they are equal in importance, even though the state of Indiana does not require you to approve them. But this, these are the indicators as of twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-four. This is a preview. You'll see this report come January as well for your review. Average daily membership. You'll hear me talk a little bit more about this in the coming slides. Dr. Zupin and I welcome her, her insights as well. This one probably puts us at the biggest risk. You heard the gentleman back talk about enrollment and the way we're trending. The stoplight feature means that anything that's not green really means that caution, we need to investigate, understand why it's occurring. You're what's occurring, why it's occurring. Fortunately, as of twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-four, there's not current data concern. But if this enrollment trend continues, I will see in the coming slides, that could turn it to a red at some point. But at this point, we consider that a yellow. Fund balances, you'll hear one of the greatest strengths of Benton Schools is the strong cash balances. Get a really strong balance statement. That's kudos to this board for being pragmatic, having a plan in place. Twenty twenty-four, we ran a balanced budget, so we're yellow, not accumulating too much in the way of, of additional because the education fund ran a deficit. However, the operations fund ran a surplus, so we could have been yellow at this point in twenty twenty-four. Here we say, number two, fund balances, fund balances if you're setting expenditures, really strong. It's a great place to be, gives you a lot of flexibility in addressing the challenges that are coming ahead with SCA one. Revenue by type, there is really only, shouldn't say really, there's only one mechanism or lever you can pull for revenue in the state of Indiana for schools, property taxes. So revenue by type, you've done what you can, so-called green. Referendum as a percent of total revenue. This just means that you're relying upon referendum revenue in your total budget. It's not good nor bad, it's just a fact. You're forced to have a referendum, but as we look ahead, we'll see what would happen if we don't have a referendum. Net assessed value, you all saw firsthand and experienced the changes with BP, and what happened with their assessment. So we had a couple of drops in net assessed value, so we'll call it yellow. But we'll continue to monitor. As two of the three counties have come out, we've dropped. So we'll have to continue to monitor that. Tax rate, you'll see me say later on, Benton Schools has about an eighty-six cent tax rate in twenty twenty-five, the state average is a dollar two, so you're well below the state average. Circuit breaker losses as of right now, from a percentage standpoint, you're lesser than some of your peers and percent of your total budget being less than one percent. So circuit breaker losses have been manageable, easy for me to say. The debt rating, we'll show that in the coming slides as well. You've got a really strong credit rating. So two charts, separate but both related to enrollment. This is your legal settlement in residential enrollment from two thousand seventeen to twenty twenty-four. So these are all data available from Indiana Department of Education. The blue bars represent the number of kids, K-12, living within Benton Schools. And this is one that piqued our interest in looking at these data. In two thousand seventeen, there was one thousand nine hundred and thirty-five Benton Schools kids, K-12, living within your waters. So that residential enrollment, or excuse me, that legal settlement, if you look at the line, try to, that's the line is going down, but in twenty twenty-four, one thousand, seven hundred and eighty-three.
And it almost tracks the same for the ones that are enrolled.
That's exactly right. It's, you're right.
Is that county or district?
District.
District, yeah.
Yep, yep. So incorporates kids who live in all three counties. So the corollary to that is you can see the gap between the blue and the yellow. So that's essentially what this is. So the purple are those kids who live outside of Benton Schools, who aren't attending Benton Schools. What is that pink color? I'm not written by my color. So pink are the ones who live within Benton Schools but transfer out. So then you can see what that net transfer impact is. But the one that has my radar because, as Dr. Zupin and I have talked about this one, is this is not just a Benton Schools challenge. Heard, we say, and I know you've heard Dr. Zupin say it as well, in the state of Indiana, this is a common challenge for little schools. Take what? Sixty-some counties of ninety-two are decreasing in population. So kind of being your lifeblood of your school district on that blue line, you all are keenly familiar with. So now looking at everybody's favorite topic, we look at some of the expenditures. So if you combine the education fund, which is supported by state revenue, and the referendum fund, which is a property tax revenue, it supports teaching and learning. So we talked about what are we paying for out of education fund and referendum? The one hundred object code are salaries, and the two hundred are benefits. The salaries and benefits, you can see over the past three years, purple being twenty twenty-two, blue twenty twenty-three, and yellow twenty twenty-four. Pretty much everything we do out of these two funds are for teaching and learning. So this is very common throughout the state of Indiana. Teaching, or education is a people-based industry, so right within what other schools throughout the state of Indiana and nationally. Similar to the operations fund, the majority of the cost are salaries and benefits. When you combine the two, so compensation for staff. Operations fund, remember that it's not just teaching and learning, it's how you operate the school. So the five hundreds, six hundreds are transporting kids and your supplies. The four hundreds are, let me take a quick step back. One hundred, one hundreds and two hundreds are staff compensation. Three hundreds are some contracted services. Four hundreds are building maintenance type items. Five hundred, six hundred are some contracted services and supplies. Then the seven hundreds are your capital investment. So learning more, you all recall during COVID, there were some delays in shipping. So by schools, you're delaying some of the timing of it. It was not as clean as we would hope, but you could see some of the impact year to year with the delay of delivery at school lists. So that's how we spent our dollars over the past three years. Benton Schools has an A-plus credit. That is considered to have very high-grade credit. That is a very strong credit rating by Standard Poor's. Standard Poor's not, doesn't just rate the state of Indiana, but it rates school districts throughout the country. So having a, an A-plus rating is great because anytime you sell bonds, you're going to improve by about three to five basis points every time you're a notch higher. So how that compares to the rest of the state of Indiana, you're in this yellow, so you're in good company with a lot of your peers throughout the state of Indiana. So we did a SWOT analysis, and we've been working with Dr. Zupin and Tracy. So SWOT is like, what are our strengths, what are our weaknesses, what are our opportunities, what are our threats? The strengths are, you've got strong credit rating, you've got really strong cash balances, and we have comparable low total tax rate compared to our peers throughout the state of Indiana. And that's not by accident. These are things that you strategically targeted to put yourselves in a good position. Some of the weaknesses, though, as we look ahead, is residential enrollment is decreasing. We talked about that blue bar. Transferred out. The district are also increased. Let revenue loss, about one hundred and thirty-four thousand in twenty twenty-eight. Then expenditures projected to outpace revenue beginning in twenty twenty-nine that we'll look at. Then concentrated amount of net assessed value compared to the largest ten taxpayers. Those are the opportunities, though. You've got some flexibility with how you may want to plan for the referendum. Those strong cash balances, some of the challenges presented by SCA one, those strong cash balances, that buys you some time to make some informed decisions going forward. We'll talk about the debt schedule later on, about how the debt schedule, at this point, all debt matures in twenty twenty-nine. You position yourself to consider capital investments in twenty twenty-five as a result of that work. And we're monitoring possible refunding of the two thousand sixteen bonds. You heard Mr. Barst talk about how bonds are mortgages. Yes, in some ways, but what I would say here is you can't refund a municipal bond anytime you want to like you're on home mortgage. They have call dates, so to keep that tax-exempt status you created, talk about, there's a provision that we can only refund bonds within a ninety-day window before the call date keeps the tax exempt. Your takeaway there is these two thousand sixteen bonds have a July call date, so if interest rates are low enough, we'll seek an opportunity to refund the bonds. The threats, as I see it, is legislative actions, SCA one presents challenges, no doubt about it, especially with net assessed value. Economic uncertainty, what could happen with inflation, seems to have subsided here in recent months. Medicaid, so the federal government is passing more costs on Medicaid down to the state. Right now, Medicaid is the second-largest expenditure in the state budget. If they pass more cost on to the state, K-12 and higher ed are the largest portion of the state budget, about forty-seven percent. Medicaid's about twenty-six percent. So if Medicaid eats up more of that pie, that could present challenges to schools and higher ed of being compressed. But we'll see what the Medicaid impact is in the coming months, which means it could open up the budget, again, which is not something they would do during a short session. Unfunded mandates, new standardized tests, new high school diploma requirements, then the women's lottery. So those are the threats posed. So let's get into all of those factors being together. These are schedule assumptions. I'm not going to read each and every one of these unless you want me to bore you to death. Point being that we're working with Dr. Zupin and Tracy, trying to use some of the historical trends to help project out where we're going. One percent annual decrease in enrollment, anticipating and projecting a two percent increase in state funding year to year. Hopefully we get that with twenty twenty-six on. Circuit breakers based upon historical trends. So we'll see what happens if circuit breakers impacted by decreasing net assessed value, increasing tax rates. So we'll have to monitor that going forward. Net assessed value is based upon what we're seeing in SCA one, which is somewhere probably between a two to three percent decrease annually in net assessed value, unless we get really strong growth. Our levy projections are based upon 4% growth in operations fund and a 3% growth in the operating referendum. So those are our revenues from a high level. Dispersments, assuming a 4% increase for salaries and benefits in order to keep competitive in the marketplace, beginning in 2026. For all other expenses, assuming 3.5% in 2025, 3.5% in 2026, 3.25 in 2027, 2028, and 3% from 2029 to 2033. Some were close. Some would argue that's probably high for inflation, some may argue it's low. Basically, on trend of where we've been the past few years with business schools. The debt, we'll see, is all outstanding, plus the approved debt that we'll review. So what it looks like is we combine the education fund, which is state funding, the operating referendum, and the property tax fund, operations and revenue. The blue bars represent our annual revenue year to year. So the 2022 through 2024 numbers are actual, based upon what was submitted to the Department of Education by Tracy and her team. And the yellow represents the annual expenditures year to year. And you can see this black line, which represents the cash balances at the end of every fiscal year. Reminder that business schools, like all but two school districts in the state of Indiana, are on a calendar-year budget. So these are the cash balances as of 12/31 of every year. So based upon the assumption of, you know what, let's keep the referendum rate 31 cents from 2026 through 2028. So you can see this blue line, the blue bar, year to year, is going to keep up with that 31 cents. But let's make the assumption that the referendum is either not sought for renewal or we just let it fall. So you can see the change from 2028 to 2029 is that drop in the referendum. So assuming no 31 cents, actually zero cents beginning in 2029. But if we continue operations as normal, we would peak in 2028 with our cash balance of an illustrated of about 36 million. Then through 2033, you can see we'd be back down to about $11.8 million at that point, assuming that we did not realign or right-size our budget as a result of the drop in referendum.
Do, have schools, as you've worked with schools with referendums, have they ever changed the rate that was voted for?
Yeah, good question. So so many different scenarios play out, and it's a community-by-community decision. But there are some, I live in a community who is seeking a referendum, had a lower rate than what was approved back in 2019. So the other illustration, talking to Dr. Zupin and Tracy, is what-if scenario. So what if we didn't tax at the full 31 cents over the next four years? What could the impact be? Great segue by the way. So looking at 2026 through 2028, if you set the referendum rate 15 cents, essentially cut it in half. What would that look like between these four funds? And you can see that, still running a budget surplus in 2027, but in 2028, that's that first year of our lit revenue going away. At that point, the model changes from where in 2029, we ran a deficit. In the 31-cent model, the 15-cent model, you actually start to see a slight deficit based upon these assumptions of 2028. And again, we assume that falls off, it's not either sought for renewal or it's not extended. And that's again why you see this significant drop in the blue from 2029 through 2033. And rather than having $11 million in the bank projected at the end of 2033, in this scenario, we don't have about $4.2 million based upon these assumptions.
If you don't mind, I want to go back to that. So what, what are schools thinking when they are midway or closer to the end? What, what is in their thought process on changing the amount?
You're saying for when they seek renewal or just when they're...
No, prior to.
Yeah, so if I'm in your shoes, I'm letting my projected cash be mine. So the board gives direction to Dr. Zupin and Tracy on, what are we comfortable with cash balance-wise in the short term? So this is a projection through 2033. But as you approved, Dr. Zupin, Tracy will be presenting a budget here in the coming meetings. So as you set the tax rate, you don't have to make decisions tonight. This is just what we're seeing based upon these broad assumptions going forward. So as you determine your budget and approve the budget, you still have another step in the process. So after you adopt your budget, then you'll get the 1782 notice, which I know these gentlemen are familiar with, with the county as well. Then if you make any adjustments at that point, that's when you certify it. So there's, what, three, potentially four more months of this process to play out. By that point, you'll know your enrollment, you'll know what your total net asset value is, and you'll know what your program services and needs are to determine what is the appropriate tax rate for 2026. So we're just trying to give you a sense of where you could be headed directionally based upon a comparison of 15 cents or 31 cents.
But didn't we last year, we, we went for the 31 and we did get the 31, right?
Because of the, the cap and what you could receive.
Yes, you see where I'm getting, I mean, we don't, we're not 100% in control of that either.
Right. No, you're, you're exactly right. That's why we assume 3% growth. So the state of Indiana did cap the levy growth because a lot of communities were growing, gosh, 5%, 10%, 15% depending upon the community. So the state of Indiana capped at that 3% growth.
For everybody, even though we're driven that way, yeah.
On the reds, green and, and yellow. So for the cash reserves, us being healthy, is there a rule of thumb? Is there a standard that, you know, we should aim for?
Yeah, good question. So the old traditio, I shouldn't say, you know, the traditional model is that you would want nothing below 15%. That way, you have two months of reserves on your books, and you can maintain, so if the state of Indiana delays a payment, the county taxes are delayed because of the property tax. You've got two months of reserves to make sure you can make payroll. Well, what the industry standards are now going to is either more of a range-based system or what's called a risk-based system. So if I'm in your shoes, that smell test, like what is an appropriate range? Somewhere between 8% to 33% depending upon the risk of the district? Because the reason why I say 30, as much as 33% is because if the county were delayed because of all these new property tax changes, they've got to do a lot of the software reverence. But you still have to make your debt payments. What we don't want to do is borrow money to make the debt payments. We don't want to borrow money to pay back borrowed money. So we want to maintain a strong balance. So if we have to make a debt payment, we can make the cash on hand.
Do you know, has, has any, or do you know, I guess it's a question, any legislation that is coming out for the windmills? Because if they're not supplemented, they're not efficient. And I don't, I mean, how, that, that scares me with, we're heavy on the windmills. And that can be cut if they're not making money.
It's a good question. I'm not aware of any legislation coming out that doesn't mean it won't. I'm not aware of.
Yeah.
It's a good question. Yeah, but you're right. Like, that's why you, for that case, might be more appropriate, to more of a risk-based amount. Because if we look at that portion of your net asset value, that's relying upon windmills, and that goes away, how much revenue are they paying toward your referendum and wanting to keep that cash on hand? That is a really good question.
8% to 33%, that's a big range.
So it is. And it's, it's intended to be pretty wide. I think the statewide average for all school corporations, I think this number was going back to 2023s, but it might be 2024. So excuse me for not recalling exactly off the top of my head. But the, the school average was about 33%. So the only question you might be asking is, okay, that gives the school corporation soaring. So what does that mean to the average taxpayer, though, between the 15-cent tax rate and the 31-cent tax rate? Let's go back to that average taxpayer, $153,700. This is based upon the 2026 deductions. So $48,000 flat, 40% supplemental. So an average taxpayer is making $63,000 in net asset value. So on an annual basis, if you set the rate at 31 cents in 2026, that 31-cent tax rate, you've got $197 per year, or $16 approximately they paid for MSTR. Similar to that, because roughly half, that average taxpayer would have their tax bill for the referendum rate cut in half. For that average taxpayer, $95 per year for that 15-cent referendum tax rate. Accretions, 31 cents, $6.18 per acre. So if somebody owned 100 acres, they're paying about $615 per year for that 31 cents. Or roughly half with 15 cents of about $298. That does incorporate, Mr. Melton, that does incorporate the 6% deduction, try 42% properties. Then for rental property, $100,000, for each $100,000, you're talking with a 6% deduction for rental properties as well, $291 for 31 cents, about $141 for 15 cents. But for commercial property, no deduction if it's non-business personal property. So that for each $100,000 of commercial and industrial property, 31 cents would be $310. For the 15 cents, it'd be about $150. That's comparison to what it means to the average taxpayers. So to wrap it up, this is the existing debt. I know this board's seen this many, many times. You heard me say that business schools has an accelerated debt payment. So as of today, for a budget year 2025, a little over $3 million total in annual payments. So you pay twice a year. You pay your debt on June 30th and December 31st. Why? Because they coincide with property tax collections. Pay your property taxes in May, business schools gets it first distribution in June. Pay your property tax in November, make the debt payment in December. So the gray is the outstanding debt as of today. If nothing changed, debt would mature 2029. But prior boards, part of the strategy is, like you knew, somewhere at every school corporation, I think, we work with in the state of Indiana, your list of capital needs far exceeds what you can issue in debt. So as a result, we always try to structure to give you the option that if you want to issue new bonds to make capital investments, that's why this board cut out some capacity in 2026, knowing that you may want to issue bonds in 2025 to make those capital investments. So we talked about it being tax-neutral. We can structure these in a way to avoid any type of tax rate difference. So this is an illustration for the proposed $6.6 million bonds. Paying over 20 years, this is what it could look like. We can, we can tailor it to whatever the board's target is from a tax rate standpoint, because we're not sold the bonds yet. So whenever we do that, we can change around maturities and push these down, push the first few years down and push the latter years up. So again, it's kind of a weight measure on, on how you want to target for the tax rate and tax management standpoint.
So when you're talking about all of those, those list of items that we want to get done, and capital projects doesn't cut it. So we use, you know, typically the GO bond is, is the way to go. But with this cooling-off period, what does that look like to us? So we, I believe when I came on, we were issued a GO bond for the technology and safety. So what, and it's typically a three-year, two- or three-year payout. So what does that look like, this cooling off?
I'm not an attorney, so I, I want any bond counsel to confirm. So but my understanding is, from a GO bond perspective, it's kind of like a three-prong test. The first question asked for solved is, the last time we issued GO bonds, did it have a two-year or fewer repayment? If the answer to that question is yes, okay, then what's the next question? Does your proposed bonds have a five-year or fewer repayment? If the answer to that question is yes, then you go down to the third question. It is, well then, when do the prior bonds that had a two-year or less maturity, when do they mature? Because there has to be a cooling off. So let's say you make your final payment. Let's say you have two-year repayment, or excuse me, a two-year maturity. You issue bonds, for example, in February 2024 in a final payment. It's not when you make, not when business schools makes a payment, but actually when the bonds, bond payment is made in January 15th of 2026. Since that would have a, what, a 23-month repayment, you could not issue GO bonds again from February for when you initially sold the initial bonds. So it's a one-year cooling off from when the bonds mature, not when you make your last payment.
And do you know what the premise was behind that?
Yeah, my understanding, just based upon listening to the testimony, is a lot of school corporations, because of the obstacles, and what the business schools have, have a laundry list of capital needs. So a lot of schools were issuing GO bonds once they got their net asset value in August through September, issuing a small GO bond just to keep the tax rate. If net asset value was going up, that being so too was the tax rate. So that tax rate was going up to homeowners. So it was a way, methodology for the general assembly to basically say, no, you can't do that any longer. If you do, you have to have one identified year repayment, none of this one or two-year repayment. Good question. So this is not final, I want to be clear on this. This is not final. Whatever the board determines from a target, target tax rate standpoint, knowing that if net asset value goes down, we might not be able to even absorb that payment that we're estimating here in 2026. So just by the sheer fact of our net total net asset value goes down, we may have to push down the capacity anywhere. So we'll continue to work, Dr. Zupin and Tracy, and ultimately get your direction on how we may want to approach that. That's all I've got. I know that was probably pretty lengthy.
I, I do want to ask about the refunding, because I think, John, you had mentioned that. Now, in my dealings here and at my previous school, we never refunded. It was a payoff, and then you go to a next one. So the refunding, is that common? Have, do you know if business has done that before?
Yeah, because you're only refunded if you can save dollars. There's a specific state statute that says you can only refund if you save on interest. So the point being that what a lot of schools do, and I would recommend to say to business schools is, pass a resolution, give yourself a minimum savings threshold. That way, you got to all target exactly what the parameters would be for us to even consider refunding. And if we didn't generate savings, just don't move forward. So you've given Dr. Zupin and Tracy the authorization but not required. We would only do it if we can save on interest. I made that same recommendation to a school where last week, CFO the other day. So there's no harm in passing the resolution. Because ultimately, if you can't refund because interest rates are not where they should be, it means you got a good deal when you first sold the bonds, and that's great. Got a home mortgage. If you refund it back when interest rates are low and you can't refund now, it's okay. Then you got a great interest rate. So it's just, again, it puts you all in the driver's seat to make decisions that are best for you and your taxpayers.
So when we have a retreat, it was talked about quite a bit with, when it comes time for renewal, you know, well, we need the whole 31 cents. Should we reduce it? Should we have none? And so a lot of that discussion was about the renewal. But you, and I, you know, I've talked to you in the last week or so, you, you have brought up other options. I, I did not know that schools did that. And I'm not implying that we should. I'm just saying that that was a surprise to me that, that... I'm just saying that that was a surprise to me, that after a voted referendum amount, that that could be changed. And so that's something that, during the retreat, we did not talk about. And I don't know, I guess I'd like to talk to other schools with referendums and wonder why they might do that, what the strategy might be.
Yeah.
They did it here, right? They reduced, they voted for the...
The very first one, we did it, I was not on that board, but they did it.
No, the board prior.
And when we came on, it threw off the whole projection. But then what we did is we stayed conservative the next two years, trying to get a better hold of it.
They voted fifteen cents on the referendum, which got us in a hole essentially, because it could have been twenty cents or whatever. How you calculated that kind of gives you a visual of what you actually needed on your, you know, to stay a balanced budget essentially. Like why ask for a referendum and take thirty-one cents if you only need twenty cents? But it got us, and I wasn't on that board either, but they voted fifteen cents. So when the new board kind of came in, because everybody was upset about that, we had that vote right away, thirty-one cents, which also upset the taxpayers. So now, like, that's what I, when I was on the board, I was like, let's just stay balanced. Let's not take more than we need. But that's kind of what we're all trying to get on, where we're already in a hole. So we need to work on that and even vote on, I think we vote on it every year, don't we? For the...
For the amount, for the amount that we take. But the voting for the thirty-one cents, it cannot vote, that's the cap.
Correct, yeah.
Now, the new language, we'll see, so whether the tax rate driven, in the ballot question now, it's levy driven. So you're setting a maximum levy if you were to pursue a renewal. So you're not setting thirty-one cent max, you're setting, okay, if we want to generate a making this up, five million dollars a year, we're not going to levy over five million dollars a year.
Yeah. Like Westhoff, yeah, they have a referendum merely to pay teachers. So they have, it's not that it's a need, they do it so that they have the money sitting there if they need to pay teachers more. What I understand was from a board member I talked to, he said, what do you, I mean, how can you guys be where, I mean, because they grow and they have, you know, a lot of students? And then I found out it's merely for them to control paying their teachers.
And they've never had a problem getting it passed, it's always been a high percentage.
Yeah.
Yeah, we reiterate, the only mechanism that the general assembly is giving schools to pursue to provide teachers more compensation is property tax levy. All right, thanks for sticking with me.
Thank you.
No, no, yeah, thank you.
I do, before you leave, I want to make sure you ask and...
I don't think I've got anything. The only thing I would say is, when you're looking at the average homeowner in Lafayette or a big city where there's tons and tons of houses, that makes up a huge percentage of the pot. That's not the case here. So we're talking about average, that really isn't average because probably it's probably less than ten percent of what actually comes in, I bet. I think we're like ninety-three, ninety-four percent comes from that.
I can all go back and calculate that number. I know we've got it somewhere, but I already said I remember something.
That's why it has such a deep impact. Because I mean, when you're talking, you know, just a little bit on a hundred fifty thousand dollar house, that's not that much. When you start looking at the heat, you know, who that burden is on, it can be precise.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks for attending.
Thank you, guys, for coming.
So where do we go from here? What, you're in our shoes, what do we do?
What do we do from here?
I mean, I didn't even know this when we were talking in July.